Okay, here we go. Well, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is August 12th, 2020. Due to social distancing guidelines and regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on gatherings of 25 or more people, this meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comments were made available on the Township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I think we're all here tonight. And no subsea professionals or anything. Let's see, I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Okay, do I hear a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay. See. Okay, some announcements. I'd like to announce that the September workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be conducted on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 instead of Monday, September 7th, the regularly scheduled date. The reason is that Labor Day holiday will occur on Monday, September 7th. The meeting will begin at its usual 7 o'clock PM start time. Okay, so it is with great sadness that the Board of Commissioners announces the passing of former Commissioner Robert C. McGory. Bob served on the Board from 1995 to 2005 and was president. We extend our deepest sympathies to Bob's wife Carolyn and his friends and family during this difficult time. So, and I'll say I got to know Bob very well. I like Bob a lot, and I'm sorry that, you know, didn't have a chance to sort of say my goodbyes. So. Next, a just an announcement about the COVID-19 situation. With summer drawing to a close, the Board of Commissioners would like to provide the community with a brief update regarding the impact of COVID-19 on township operations. The Township's Police and Administration Building, as well as the Free Library of Springfield Township, remain open to the public. The Township Building is open daily from 8:00 through 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM while the library is currently operating on its summer operating schedule until after the Labor Day holiday. Library services remain limited in-person browsing of library materials, as well as book pickups and drop-offs. All seating areas, meeting rooms, and computer workstations at the library remain closed until further notice. Residents who plan to visit the police administration or library buildings are reminded to wear face masks at all times. Springfield Township's Recreation Center also remains closed to public rentals but will be utilized for limited township recreational programming and essential services. The Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Department has also found it necessary to modify the fall programming schedule to ensure compliance with CDC and social distancing guidelines for team-oriented sports. The Board regrets to inform the public that both the Community Day and National Night Out events have been canceled for this year. The decision was made in light of the limitations placed on the size of permitted outdoor gatherings, the ability of sponsors to participate in both events during these difficult economic times, and an abundance of caution to prevent a recurrence of the virus in our area. Due to limitations on the size of indoor public gatherings, all public meetings such as those of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Board will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meetings detailing or meeting, meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the Township's website, which is www.springfieldmonco.org. The Township's website is an incredibly useful tool, and the Board encourages the entire community to visit it and to explore those resources and programs that are available through the Township's operating departments. Okay, so now, I am going to read, this is my own personal statement and that I wrote, and so here goes. "I am going to read a personal statement that is my own opinion, so the other commissioners may or may not agree with me on any of these thoughts. Anyway, a week ago, a virtual town hall meeting was sponsored by the Multicultural Parents Association and the Cheltenham branch of the NAACP and was hosted and moderated by Commissioner Eddie Graham. The title of the town hall was 'Community Policing and Juvenile Criminal Justice Reform.' And by the way, this was Eddie's program, and I believe as long as the First Amendment is still intact, he can say anything he wants to and run any program he wants to without requiring anyone's permission. The talk itself had a pretty narrow focus, and he invited a number of very well-respected, impressive, and knowledgeable experts in the field to speak on these topics, including, for instance, the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and other experts in juvenile and adult criminal justice, as well as our own Chief of Police, Mike Pitco. In Eddie's initial invitation, he stated, 'Trust is broken, and the safety of our residents and our police officers are compromised when some people experience inequitable law enforcement. Residents may think that the police are prejudiced and enforce policies unfairly. Police may feel blame for all kinds of social problems and think they don't get credit for doing their jobs. Meanwhile, our community residents and township wrestles to balance protection of civil liberties and public safety. Opportunities for dialogue and action involving residents and police will lead to better relationships, more equitable treatment by the police, greater police responsiveness and accountability, and greater willingness of residents to work with police. Communities will be safer for everyone.' I believe this statement was fair, even-handed, and exemplary, and I for one believe that what Eddie is doing for this community is important and timely. I also think that it takes a lot of courage to stand up to a fair amount of criticism and misinformation in order to help this community explore these difficult issues. That is not to say that I necessarily agree with everything that was heard at the meeting. For one thing, although most of the guests were well-prepared for what they had to say, and granted that Chief Pitco did provide an opening statement, it did not appear to me that he was prepared for a meeting format that allowed for a considerable amount of time defending his police officer's actions as they related to a specific incident that had already been through the social media hall of mirrors where numerous conflicting facts and opinions had been aired to no real constructive end. It would be my hope that in future events, we could avoid this sort of thing in favor of a more constructive dialogue as far as the chief's involvement. But the central point of all of this had to do with our ongoing relations with Carson Valley School and our ongoing efforts to improve those relations and minimize conflicts between students, staff, and residents of our community. We have already had a number of productive meetings with Carson Valley, as Dr. Dexter Davis, the Senior Director of Education at Carson Valley attested to spearheaded in large part by Commissioner Graham and involving important contributions by Chief Pitco, as well as Springfield Township and Carson Valley staff. I also want to say that I personally have full faith that our chief and his police force take the mandate of tolerance seriously. I and other commissioners have spoken to Chief Pitco on numerous occasions within the past few weeks to better understand his commitment to anti-bias and de-escalation training and similar efforts. I'm happy to report that all officers are in the process of completing additional anti-bias and de-escalation training made available by the Township's insurance carrier. This training is in addition to the over 2,000 hours of training provided to officers last year. I can also tell you, excuse me. I can also tell you that officers are recertified in the use of a taser and other non-lethal defense, defensive tactics every other year by our department instructors. As part of the annual firearms training, the instructor conducts a briefing on the use of force policy, including de-escalation and the use of firearms as a last resort. In the required annual mandatory in-service program, officers are trained in procedural justice and police legitimacy in 2017, and procedural justice tactics and de-escalation techniques in 2018. Both were three-hour blocks, complete with videos. Chief Pitco is actually an instructor for this training. The department also schedules two scenario day training days at the Public Safety Training Campus on an annual basis to include scenarios where de-escalation training is practiced. Also, we had the opportunity a few weeks ago to conduct in-person interviews of eight of our police officers individually as part of a promotional test process, and as you can imagine, we spent a good deal of time talking to each police officer about their attitude concerning tolerance, anti-bias, de-escalation, and community service. And although we were not able to observe them in action, I was truly impressed by the maturity and dedication of each officer, and I'm proud of each and every one of them. So now comes the hard part. In listening to the talk the other night, I heard things that I confess made me and maybe others uncomfortable. I am not used to some of the language and terminology that some of the experts use to describe racism and intolerance in our community. So I can only imagine what it is like to grow up in a situation that requires putting up with language and behavior whose hurtful effect I am not fully aware of or I take for granted. I look at this then not as an opportunity to fight back, but as a time to be quiet and listen and learn. I would like to think that we have come a long way, but then I see photos on a public street in an inflammatory nature directed against Mr. Graham, something I have never seen in this community. This is nothing more than gross intolerance. And just the other day, someone close to me was accosted on the street for doing nothing more than wearing a mask. This is nothing more than gross intolerance, and as long as these kinds of things continue to happen in our community, I'm afraid we have a long way to go and a lot to learn." So that's my report, and we will move on from there. So now I am going to move to the public portion of the meeting, and as part of the advertising of tonight's meeting, an effort was made to solicit public comment in advance of the meeting. Public comment was accepted via email up to 5:00 PM this evening. And do we have any, any comments, Brandon?
If I may, Mr. President, those in the audience, if you'd like to make public comment, we do encourage you to use the Raise Your Hand feature, which is an icon that is located at the bottom of your screen.
Okay.
We do already have one, Mr. President.
Okay, so let me just read this first, and then, and then I'll, and then I'll go ahead and do that. So the Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. So let's see, I have Kelly King. Kelly, do you want to make your comment?
Well, you are unmuted, Kelly.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Kelly King, and I live on Larina Avenue in Orland. Before I begin my prepared statement, I would like to thank you, Commissioner Standish, for your opening comments and your support of Commissioner Graham. I'm here today to express my concern to each of you regarding the incident involving children on Bethlehem Pike on July 23rd, as well as my disappointment in the subsequent messaging presented by our police department. I know that others are speaking out in this manner, and I would like to highlight the disregard to the protection of a minor's right to privacy and the disclosure of a child's privacy residence. I imagine if my child was stopped and questioned outside of the Springfield storefront, their residence would not be disclosed in a public forum by our police force. In the days that followed this incident and building community concern, I submitted a request via the Right to Know Law in order to obtain information and avoid reliance on hearsay or social media. I'm happy to have learned about the process for submitting a Right to Know request, and I encourage other community members to do the same whenever it's appropriate to foster understanding and accountability. However, what I received in response included far less information on the incident than the Springfield Township Police Department's own abrupt and incorrect Facebook post, and far less information than Chief Pickell's statements on the matter during the Springfield Town Hall. In addition, I'm very concerned about the message that we send when we perpetuate negative stereotypes about children, many of whom have experienced trauma and would certainly benefit from more support from the Springfield community. I would also like to point out that while this incident may be deemed as, quote, "minor" in the eyes of our police chief, encounters with police are often not minor in the hearts and minds of Black people, and we need to do better to learn and grow from this. I would like to ensure that our Board does their part, each one of you does your part, to address these concerns, address concerns related to transparency and policing, and do so in a meaningful way so that we continue to build and improve our community. If you'll permit me, I have three specific questions for the Board. I can ask each one individually and get a response if that's preferable, or I can ask all three?
Um, I don't know.
Okay, well, I'll ask all three, and then you can choose the order with which to answer. First, can we ensure that the next board meeting agenda includes topic areas that are aligned with our community's support of regular town hall meetings and the concerns that are related to police practices? Second, what actions does the Board plan to take to address the social media practices demonstrated by our police representatives to avoid future disclosure of not only misinformation, but of potential violations of the privacy of minors? Third, what, if any recourse, does a community member have if they feel that the response to a submitted Right to Know request was not inclusive of all of the documentation related to an incident for which the request was submitted? Thank you for addressing each of these questions, and thank you for taking the time to listen to my statement.
Okay. The two, the second and third question, I guess we can discuss. I didn't catch the first one. Could you repeat the first question again?
Yes, of course. My first question, can we ensure the next board meeting agenda includes a specific topic area that's aligned to the community's support of regular town hall meetings and the concerns related to policing practices? So my ask here is just that we have it as a formal agenda item so that it can be discussed in perhaps as great length as the traffic conversations are discussed in other community
At the workshop, at the workshop, right? I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, I mean, we'd have to come up with like, you know, the, you know, I don't, I mean, so we would have to be a little more specific about what that entails, but I guess we could do that, yes. Compared, I would support that.
Go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner.
Whether, whether it was part of a regular meeting or something outside that we do regularly, I'm certainly hoping that that would, would be open to be a part of that. And I think, I think that, you know, the dialogue and discussion is good. I think when, when things happen and incidents happen and there's a stir, you know, as they happen, it tends to be, you know, more of an airing of grievances at the moment, but when you have the regular dialogue, it, it can mature into something that,
Yeah.
You know, is more positive and affecting policy and change that, that people can, can really get behind. So I would definitely want to be part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that, you know, the thing about agenda items is that agenda items don't take very long, and I'm not sure what kind of a discussion we can get into in a, you know, let's say a confined 20-minute period or something, but you know, maybe we could, you know,
And I can say, I can add an additional point to that. First of all, Ms. King, thank you very much for, for sharing the statement with us. You know, I know, in part echoing what our President, Commissioner Standish had read in his opening statement, I myself have been spending the last several months listening as well, and really engagement that began in earnest from a member of our high school, Ms. Paris Thompson, in which she sent a letter to, I think to all of us, but, you know, asking us for engagement following the death of George Floyd. And I've been having a lot of those conversations with a lot of different residents, and, you know, I think that, I know for myself, I'm at a point now where I can begin to raise some of these issues or raise tangible things that I think that we do need to look at. So my hope is that by next month, we can put some focus on the social media policy, and I think that is a tangible, actionable item that we can include on the agenda for next month. I think we can begin to talk about some of the oversight questions that you had also addressed in one of your additional questions, and, you know, begin to hash out, you know, some of this Right to Know questions, which I think even for members of the Board, you know, there's, there's some questions there for us as well. There is some functionality to the website, which I think has come up in some town hall meetings with regards to being able to maybe submit questions or get answers or submit if they had concerns and do so on anonymous basis. So we're in the process of, we certainly did spend a lot of time revamping our website this year, and I think we're in the process right now of looking at what other municipalities and townships have in terms of functionality, particularly pertaining to their police department pages, and if there are improvements to be made, you know, we'll be looking to do those in short order as well. So I know that I'm beginning to put together that list for myself, and I think that we all are individually as well. So I would anticipate starting to see some, some very real actionable items on the agendas for the months moving forward. But I do, I greatly appreciate your comments tonight, Ms. King.
I also would like to say that I'm in support of having this as an agenda item next month. Having been in the process of, processes of police reform for the last 30 years, having been appointed by Governor Rendell at the time to the Police Advisory Commission in Philadelphia, and also chairing the public information for that, for that committee, there are some instances that I think that got some negative feedback because the entire town hall was to open an uncomfortable conversation because of the disparity and arrest of the minority population here in Springfield Township. I think one of the statistics, I don't know if you overlook it or didn't heard, I didn't hear any, I haven't gotten any other than tonight's opening statement. I have not gotten any written support from any of the commissioners on this board concerning the initiative. So I'm glad to hear that, that at least some of you are willing to support in this effort. But you can have a population where the minority population of people of color are 18% of the population, but account for close to 90% of the arrests. That dictates that you have to have some sort of opening dialogue to address that disparity. And that's the only thing that the town hall was meant to do, was not to cause any sort of inflammatory remarks against our police chief, which is why I sent him out a personal notice. I went to him, it went to our township managers, and it went to all of you commissioners outlining exactly what was going to take place in the dialogue that we had in the town hall. So it wasn't a way to blindside him, but to let him know that there were some concerns here in the community. So having had this conversation, I'm very happy to see that some of the other commissioners on the Board are supporting me in that effort. Also, I think some of the residents, especially to one that was noted is Paris Thompson. I did not notice, I don't know if you replied to her individually, but I don't recall receiving a response from any of the commissioners to her concerns. So I think that also paints a negative picture in trying to address this important topic. So I just think, I always took the stance of being transparent in all of my issues concerning this, and I just hope that this Board will, will recognize that and also try to emulate that in dealing with the residents in this particular initiative. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, let's put that on the agenda for next week or for next month. And the other thing that I was sort of intrigued by is Chad Lassiter, who is the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, suggested that there are ways, things that they may be able to provide to us to, you know, streamline some of this or, you know, help us, you know, in, you know, formatting some of this, this type of dialogue. So I'd be interested in seeing what, you know, he might be able to help out with, too.
Eddie, just one point of clarity, I did respond to Paris on one of her emails, and I did so privately, I didn't copy everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee, I appreciate that.
And while we're, we're just going on record, I mean, I communicated with Ms. Thompson as well, as well as many other residents, and frankly, didn't feel the need to go through any other commissioner through those communications, but those were, in fact, done.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, I'll say the same thing I did too, and I generally, when I respond to a constituent, I don't use reply all, I think you can have a more sincere conversation, and I'm sorry if that's offensive, but that's the way I do it.
I don't think it's offensive, Commissioner Harbison, I just think it just shows, not knowing that, I think it opens up a door of transparency to the entire Board. Because in that particular incident, or incident, I think that we all should be aware, or that we should know what the other is thinking on this, and especially on an issue as sensitive as this one. And that's, that's just my way of thinking, I'm not trying to influence any of the other commissioners, but because it is such a sensitive area, I wanted to be completely transparent in all of my remarks to, not only to the resident, but also to this Board. I just think that is what equitable treatment is all about.
Okay. Why don't I take the next, the next raised hand? Who would that be?
Lauren Camper.
Lauren Camper, okay.
All right, Lauren, you're unmuted.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Camper, and I reside at 1310 Bradford Road in Orland. I did prepare a statement tonight, but I'm going to go a little bit off script just because I don't want to repeat anything that has already been stated thus far this evening. I am on the leadership team for our Multicultural Parents Association here in Springfield, and we did work with Commissioner Graham for the town hall last week. And I think some of the positive aspects that derived from that meeting would be that the chief did agree to conduct a resident survey to gauge perception and feelings toward the police department, and he also agreed to create an online portal for individuals to file anonymous complaints in regards to the police. I think that one of the, some of the information and statistics that were shared last week that I took to heart and found particularly alarming were that we learned that from 2010 to present, 133 children have been arrested from Carson Valley. Over the same period, 10 children from Springfield Township High School have been arrested. Of those 133 children, 123, 123 children were Black, nine were Latino, and one was white. These children were, had in some cases, overcharged with felonies, which significantly impacted their ability to get treatment here, they're extradited from Philadelphia or whatever, you know, neighborhood counties they're from, Bucks County, I don't know. They're extradited back, and those judges then handle them there, but the treatment that they were here to seek, they are no longer able to seek. And from those statistics, I think we can all understand why, how this is disproportionately impacting Black and Brown children. I also think that we need to change the negative stereotype associated with Carson Valley. On the call last week, I did admit that, or what services they provided, until I actually took the time to look it up. I'd made an assumption ignorantly based off of posts that I'd seen on Springfield Township Police Department's page in prior years. I thought that it was a group home for bad kids all this time, until I took the opportunity to Google them and see that it's a treatment facility and that they are in fact not a group home. And I think that if, as a resident, I had this perception, imagine if there are other residents with this perception. And the moment the police department posts something on social media saying, these children were from Carson Valley, the immediate thought in some of our minds is, oh, they were just bad kids from that group home. So I appreciate the comments that were made about the work that's been done with Carson Valley. But I do think that that work needs to continue and perhaps needs to be taken to the next level. I also appreciate that the officers are going through some level of training. But if you were on the call last week and you heard Chief Pitco say, I looked at those, uh, there were, there were comments on social media where many people were pro-police. That statement in and of itself, to me, creates a barrier between our residents. Because he doesn't understand that being pro-police and being anti-police brutality are mutually exclusive. We are talking about two separate things. I support our police. I, I don't know many people who don't support our police. But I also am an African-American woman. I have two black boys and I worry for them. I have to raise them differently, have different conversations with them. In the wake of George Floyd, my 14-year-old was crying that weekend because he was afraid. I have to have different conversations with my children and how to encounter the police because I need them to come home at the end of the night because I don't want their brown and black skin to be weaponized. For, uh, coming to a close, I think that, you know, these types of efforts often appear to fall on Commissioner Graham's shoulders. I do not interact with any other commissioner. I do not see many other commissioners posting things online, engaging with residents the way Commissioner Graham does. And as a black man, I understand why he's doing this because this is part of his community. But this is not a black issue. This is a people issue. And sometimes when I do not see or hear anything coming from the other commissioners on this board, it's disappointing and the silence is deafening. Just in closing, we will be continuing these town hall meetings, the next of which is scheduled for September 16th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And I hope that each of you will continue to, uh, not only physically support us with your attendance, but that you will use your positions as elected officials to help better the climate in Springfield surrounding policing. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more comments?
Baird, we, no, Ms. King has her hand up again.
Okay, Ms. King.
Oh, let me compose my vote for a second. Um, my hand was raised just to make a comment in relation to the right to know request question that I had. Mainly to let you commissioners know that if you contact the Office of Open Records in the state of Pennsylvania, they direct you to Don Berger as our point of contact. And I think that needs to be clarified because if I understand correctly, he is no longer a member of. And, um, that's all, that's what my hand is raised for.
Okay. Well, we'll get that corrected then, I'm sure. Okay. All right, well, we have work to do. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, thank you, Kelly and Lauren for the comments. And, um, you know, we're really lucky to have a really good police force here. And, uh, I think if you lined up every police force in the world, we'd be sort of right at the top of the, top of the line. So we're lucky with that, with that. And I think, um, but that comes with greater responsibility on an issue like this. Because if you're in a department or a community where, where, you know, where you see the high ceiling issue where it's real problems, and I'm not calling this not a real problem, but I'm saying, you know, major scandal type problems. It's, it's harder for those places. The bar is low, you know, our bar is, is so high that we have an opportunity and responsibility to be a leader on this. So if there's an area where we can be better transparency, then let's look at it. If we have any inequity at all, um, when it comes to our communities and individuals' colors, then let's tackle that issue. Like, we, we are equipped to do that, you know, more so than if we're putting out fires constantly. So, um, I was at the town hall, um, I mean, I'm very encouraged, I will continue to, to support that. And I think, um, you know, what you said about being pro-police, I think, I know only people on the fringes are pro-police no matter what, always. Or anti-police no matter what, always. I think most reasonable people, you know, understand, um, being a police officer is not a, an easy job. You put yourself in harm's way, you have the responsibility to be right. And dealing with varied issues that are hard for anyone to handle. And the burden of that. But at the same time, you know, you still want accountability, expect accountability from your public officials. And a willingness to change the system where it needs changing. So, um, I think this is a really good thing. I think we have an opportunity to really be a leader on this because we, we have a high bar. We have great police officers, we have a great community. So I'm excited to, you know, to be a part of that.
I think that, um, just to add to that, I, I think that because we do place our police at such a high bar, but because of the disproportionate amount of arrests, that's the reason why the question, uh, is so prevalent. Because we do have a great police force, we do have great community policing. However, the numbers that adversely affect people of color has to be addressed. And that's going to call for some uncomfortable conversations. And I think, and I'm very grateful to Ms. King and for Ms. Camper, that sometimes being the only, and this is a conversation that I've had with this board many times. Sometimes being the only African-American, uh, on the board and bringing about issues that affect our community are not just, are seen as me just championing just for that one sector of that community. When you have this kind of disparity in one section of the community, all of the community is affected, as I stated in my letter to the Board of Commissioners when I was inviting you guys and also to Chief Pitco. So I love our police department. I have family members that are presently police officers. I have family members that have been wounded in the line of police in the Philadelphia Police Department. Only thing that I'm asking is that those, those numbers are alarming. And they're not just alarming, they're one of the highest in all of Montgomery County. Once you look at this, if you look at the statistical information that comes out of, through the Montgomery County Police Chiefs Associations, ours are among the highest. That's disturbing. And that's why I want this to have to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, I see a green light around Pete, that you know, okay. All right, well, if there are no more comments, I'll move on. But this is a, you know, I think we're moving forward in the right direction. And I look forward to, you know, more, more discussion about this, um, as we go forward. So, uh, so I will now move on to the, um, the committee reports. And to kick that off, uh, my report is concerning Resolution Number 1500. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1500, a resolution granting preliminary final subdivision approval for the 501 Birch Lane and 8700 Montgomery Avenue, two-lot residential subdivision lot line change. The lot line change will increase the size of the parcel at 8700 Montgomery Avenue to 1.63 acres and reduce the size of the parcel at 501 Birch Lane to 0.98 acres. That is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any, any, uh, comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising, by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Thank you, okay. Next, we will move on to the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee, Commissioner Harbison.
Unmute yourself.
You're, you're muted there, Jeff.
You're muted.
There we go.
There we go.
I was on the screen of my report, so I, oh, okay. Low-fingered, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. The next item is the bill listing. And I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the July check reconciliation in the amount of $1,098,502.94 in the August bill listing in the amount of $427,725.59. That is my motion.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any questions on the motion? Okay, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And my second matter concerns the Library Advisory Committee. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Kate McGrannahan, the current alternative member of the Library Advisory Committee, to a full member of the Library Advisory Committee. Ms. McGrannahan fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Michael Bruce last month. Ms. McGrannahan's term of service shall expire on December 31, 2020. I'm going to read a statement and then I'll get back to that motion. Well, now go ahead, let's do that, that's my motion.
Okay, then, um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
With the appointment of Ms. McGrannahan to a full member of the Library Advisory Committee, there presently exists a vacancy on the committee as an alternate member. An alternate member attends and participates at all meetings of the committee and may vote in the absence of a full member. All members of the Library Advisory Committee serve in advisory capacity to the Board of Commissioners on the overall philosophy and goals of the Free Library of Springfield Township and is the sounding board for the library needs of Springfield Township residents. If you are interested in serving on the Library Advisory Committee or any other advisory boards or commission, the Board of Commissioners would like to hear from you. Please forward a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road in Windmore, 19038, or email to M. Taylor, T.A.Y.L.O.R. at SpringfieldMontco.org in order to be considered for an appointment. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Okay, next we will move to, uh, we'll hear from the Chairman of our Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I have a report on recycling. Pleased to announce that during the month of July 2020, Springfield Township residents recycled 228.05 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 81.4%. The net cost for the month was $27,293.12. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next we will hear from the Chairman of our Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham. You're muted. Eddie?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report for this evening, but with the, with your permission, I'd like to make an announcement.
Go ahead.
The announcement is for the Springfield Township Opioid Action Committee. I don't know, uh, the, uh, committee is forming an initiative where they're asking businesses within Springfield Township to become our community partners by having Norcan in their stores, just in case there is an incident of an overdose that they may see. Uh, just statistically, uh, in 2017, Springfield Township only had four overdoses. In 2018, it went up to eight. In 2019, we had 14. But between the, uh, between the months of January and July of 2020, we've had eight, 17 overdoses, uh, within Springfield Township alone. So in order to try and combat this, these overdoses, we want to provide the businesses of Springfield Township with a Norcam kit. And each of the Norcam kits, there will be two doses of Norcan nasal spray, instructions on how to use the Norcan, and then there will be a decal. We are asking that the businesses place a decal in the, their window so that anyone can see if there is an issue, that there is a place for them to go and secure that Norcam. So, uh, if you have any questions, you can reach out to me on my site on the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. Or you can contact Stoick at, in care of Barbara Sents at stoic123, uh, wait a minute, let me just get that, the exact email address. That would be stoic2019@gmail.com. Uh, thank you very much for allowing me to make this presentation, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, next we will hear from the Chairman of our.
Baird, about to interrupt you. Eddie, you do have a report for Chiramonte Park. Did you get the motions?
And you're muted. Eddie, you're muted.
Mike, I didn't get that email. I checked before I came on.
Okay.
I can read it, I've got it in front of me if you want me to read it for you.
Yeah, go ahead, if you like.
Okay, Eddie's okay, okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. Motion on behalf of Eddie, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of bids for the project known as Chiramonte Park ADA Improvements Project. Hopefully I pronounced that right. Scope of the work, scope work for the project includes a removal of existing mulched playground surfacing, the installation of a rubberized playground safety surfacing and asphalt walkway. The estimated cost of the project is $89,005 and the township has received $72,215 in community development block grant funding from the Montgomery County Department of Housing and Community Development. That is my motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Great, um, any questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Great, thank you, Commissioner Lee, okay, okay, so next.
Commissioner Lee.
Good, thanks, Eddie. Okay, so next we will hear from the Chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one announcement this evening, it's for police officer examinations. Please announce that the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities on behalf of their respective civil service commissions and/or municipalities, including Springfield Township, will be conducting a written examination for entry-level police officers on Saturday, October 10, 2020, at Happer Horsham High School. Anyone interested in taking the examination should visit www.montcopolicetest.com beginning August 17th, 2020, at 8:00 AM, which time a single unified application will be available to apply to any or all of the 12 police departments participating in the testing process. The online application process will close on September 30th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Participants who achieve a passing score on the written test will be invited to participate in a physical agility test on Saturday, October 31st. Women and minority candidates are encouraged to apply, that is my announcement.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we will hear from the Chairman of our Zoning Committee, Commissioner Khan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet.
The Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, August 24 at 7:00 PM. The meeting will be conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting platform to receive testimony on the following application, application of Daniel Hanselman, owner of 1001 Hunter's Lane in Orland, PA, also known as Montgomery County Tax Matt Parcel 5200-09289. The applicant has requested a dimensional special exception of the zoning ordinance of Springfield Township in order to construct in addition to the front of the home that will encroach into the required 40 foot front yard setback. The subject is a corner property and is required to have two front yards of 40 feet each. The proposed addition will encroach 17.12 feet into the Heather Road front yard. The property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward Number Seven. A copy of the application and plan are on file with the Code Enforcement Office and may be viewed during the normal business hours. That is my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Okay, then finally, we are back to the Chairman of our Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion and one announcement. First, for the motion, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a grant agreement between Springfield Township and the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners for the project known as the Mermaid Park Stream and Habitat Improvement Project. The agreement provides funding in the amount of $197,600 from the Montco 2040 Implementation Grant Fund Program, requires a local match in the amount of $49,400. The project will fund the restoration of the natural habitat, improve the water quality of the aquatic ecosystem of Mermaid Pond, and construct a passive walking trail around the perimeter of the park. That is my motion.
Great. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Please, all in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye, aye. Okay, all opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And for the announcement, there presently exists one vacancy as a member of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. The members of the Shade Tree Commission serve in an advisory capacity to the Board of Commissioners to promote the beautification of public spaces and to encourage good planning and landscaping of private spaces in the township. Members also organize and host the Township's annual Arbor Day event each spring. If you are interested in serving on the Shade Tree Commission, or any other advisory board committee, or committee, the Board of Commissioners would like you to hear from you. Please forward a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor in attendance tonight, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA 1903, or his email, M Taylor at SpringfieldMontco.org in order to be considered for an appointment. For those folks listening out there, let me tell you, Shade Tree Commission is where it's at. So come on in.
Right. Many of us got our start on the Shade Tree Commission. I will. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Okay, so that wraps up our committee reports. And we will then go back to our public portion of the meeting and ask for any, any additional comments or questions from the public. Any, any questions or comments? No questions or comments? Going once, going twice.
Baird, Betsy.
Betsy Wallace. Okay, Betsy, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering when the next town hall is going to be. I believe it was Lauren Camper who mentioned there's going to be another one, or Kelly King.
September the 16th.
Okay. Thank you. And is that, how do people find out about that?
We will be sending it out on social media. And it will also be placed on my page along with the, the Multicultural Parents Associations page and the Sheltonham NAACP branch page. But I think that we have already sent out the notices for that meeting along with the Zoom, the Zoom.
Well, maybe I can talk to you. I'll talk to you later. Okay, thank you.
Ms. King has her hand up. She may have more information.
Okay, Ms., oh, there we go. Ms. King, okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna piggyback off of Commissioner Graham and ask if each of the commissioners could share that information for the town hall to include their constituents if they do like a newsletter. I'm a member of Jim Lee's ward and perhaps he'd be willing to send it out in an email blast. I think the more, the better in this type of dialogue for our community. And thank you guys again for your consideration tonight.
Okay.
I will make sure that I send that note out first thing in the morning to everyone, Ms. King.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, don't see anybody else. So in that case, I will, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye, aye. Say nay, okay. Please record a unanimous vote. Meeting is adjourned. See you next time. Thanks, everybody.
Everyone.